Okay, we're live and we're recording. We will start our meeting with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the November 5th Village Board Meeting. Anybody out there on Facebook, if you have any questions, just put a note underneath the viewing and somebody will relay that message to me. Can I get a motion to approve the Village Board meeting minutes from October 15th, 2020? Ruth and Andy, all in favor? Aye. Both? No citizens comments? I will address quickly right here. Somebody had asked Mo or somebody at Village Hall, why Canton Woods wasn't open? You know, just open to the public to come in like it should be. And simply the explanation is that we're not, really not allowed to. I mean, we're going under the guidance from the County Health Department, from the state, and the most affected group right now by the virus has been the older generation, of which the people at Canton Woods qualify. I think that the people at Canton Woods, Ruth and her crew, have done a nice job of incorporating some activity back into the building. Again, with very strict guidelines, you know, the social distancing, masks, taking your temperature at the door, don't bring any food to share with other people, don't come real early, come just before your session starts and when it's over, you have to leave. And so by doing that, they've been able to get at least five or six activities inside the building. We're not at a point on those other scales with the health departments and stuff to just open up to the public. It's just, if you have a reason to see somebody, Ruth, or Joni, or Nancy, if you have a meeting with Nancy Sullivan to talk over issues with HEEP and those kind of things, they will let you in, in the building, and then I'm guessing they probably go down to the library or someplace like that where it's with a screen and stuff. You know, you've seen the numbers are getting a little edgy and schools keep getting shut down. The last thing we want to have is open up that facility prematurely and then have a problem. And if it, it's one thing if it's a 15-year-old soccer player who probably is going to bounce back in two or three days and feel pretty good, but you end up somebody that's 83 years old and gets it, we might have some serious problems and nobody is ready yet to open that can of worms. So I hope that answers the question. It's not Ruth being stingy with the facility, it's not the board not wanting people to have a place to go, we're just following what we think is the safest protocols. So, and hopefully, a time will come before too many months where we can start doing a little more in the facility. But right now, they're still putting lunches on every week, people are picking their lunches up. So it's not normal, it's not what was normal, but it's more normal than it was for quite a while. So I hope that answers the question, and I did it under citizens comments because the person was hoping to be able, be able to talk to the board and get an answer, and I hope that they're watching and get an answer from this. We'll move on to trustees comments. Again, I'll follow the way you are on my screen, so it's not the way that we normally might go, but Megan, anything?
Just the agenda.
Ruth?
Just the agenda, thank you.
Just the agenda?
Great, just the agenda.
I know you well enough, I knew what you were saying. Bruce?
I've got some motions I'd like to add.
Go ahead.
I'd like to add a motion authorizing the expenditure of $18,000 for the replacement of the Baldwin Hill Pump Station Building. I would like to put forward a motion authorizing hiring Alex Rose as a laborer with the Department of Public Works out of the Water Sewer Department, starting effective November 16th at the new hire rate according to the 2021 Labor Agreement. And I'd like to move that we start the process of the redevelopment of the Dome 1 and 2 wells with discussion on funding sources down the road, approximately $55,000.
Wow, you don't want much, do you?
Well, I want more, but I thought we'd stop there for tonight.
Did you get everything, Mo?
Yeah, I'll get it from the recording if I can. I didn't get it all, but I'll manage to get it.
Okay, well, I'll probably repeat it when we get to it.
Right.
So, anything else, Bruce?
No, I'll stick to the agenda.
You must be pretty happy with the way your Dodgers played in the World Series.
Yeah, except they kept me up late.
Oh, but you won, that made it nice.
Yes.
All right, Mike Shepard?
All set, the agenda's good with me, thank you.
Okay, Mark?
See, this is alphabetic, alphabetical anyways, isn't it? I'm always last, but...
You're at the bottom of my screen.
Two things, I do want to request an executive session tonight to advise the board on update contract negotiations. And secondly, I want to acknowledge the passing of a friend of mine and a classmate from Baldwensville, Terry O'Leary, passed away last week, and caught me by surprise. Terry was quite an athlete at Baldwensville and ended up playing football at Syracuse University, and I saw him in August and he was doing pretty well, so I was kind of surprised to hear about this last week. Apparently, it was a battle with cancer that he succumbed to. And so my condolences to the O'Leary family, Pat and Tim and Andrea and Doug Acker, her husband, just to pass along that information and know that we're thinking about him.
Thanks, Mark. I was going to mention something about Terry. His son had asked me if I would send him some information about Terry's high school exploits and that type of stuff, and so I sent him a note, and I told him that I've been following sports, you know, Baldwensville Athletics since 1957, as early as I can remember. And I would say that there were five, what I would call superstar athletes in that timeframe, and Terry would be one of them. He was an outstanding athlete and very, 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 very competitive. I mean, he did not like to lose, and he was beloved by John R. Carroll and Jim Pelcher. And they, having a guy like him on their team, they just, they loved him and never could say enough nice things about him. I mean, they were, so as you said, thoughts and prayers to the O'Leary family. I know the funeral's tomorrow, and they're shaken. Son told me, "My dad is my idol, always has been, this is going to be very hard for me." So, also, we want to mention that we did lose a former village employee a couple weeks ago, Butch Claver, who was with the DPW for over 30 years, I believe, and worked for Lysander the last several years as a part-time employee, and Butch is a distant relative, second or third cousin of mine. And just always tough to see people go earlier than they probably should have. So Chuck probably knows Butch pretty well. So I just wanted to make sure that the Claver family knew that we were recognizing Butch as a former employee and his passing. So, let's see if I have, what else I have here. Talking with the chief the other day and with people in our neighborhood at least, but other people around the village, it seemed like Halloween went very well, that there weren't as many people necessarily out on the street, but they were, most of the people that I talked to said that the kids seemed to be adhering to most of what our policies were, they were not, I gave out candy for two hours and I don't think I had a cluster of maybe more than three or four kids at any one time. So that, I think families held their kids back at the foot of the driveway, and then while the other kids were getting candy, and then I had a 10-foot PVC pipe that I was throwing candy down the pipe into their bag and trying to talk like Mickey Mouse, and they couldn't see me. I had a ball, so I hope they had some fun, but some of the neighbors who had their kids out thought that people did a very nice job. A lot of people sat in their driveways, had a table at the end with like sandwich bags with candy in them, everybody took a bag, and the adults sat in the driveway, some of them had fire pits, just waving to everybody. So it was in a tough time when, when people were looking for something, again, a little normal, I guess it went over pretty big. Um, let's see. Oh, one thing I have proposed, I talked to the chief about it, and I want to run it by everybody, figured we'd do it in public so people can hear it. Talked to a lot of people who are not going to be able to maybe go home for Thanksgiving to see their families in other parts of the country, or not going to be able to have members of their family come from other parts of the country into this area because of, you know, quarantine type stuff and, and other concerns. And it's the same thing with Christmas. I just wanted to throw out the possibility that people in our village would really dress up their home for Christmas. So if you put up, normally put out a wreath with a couple, you know, with some lights in it, maybe you put out two wreaths, or you throw some lights on a bush, so that people in our village could say, you know, throw the kids in the car and ride around the streets of the village and see their own lights on the lake kind of a display. We have, we have several people who already decorate quite a bit for Christmas, but I just thought it would be nice if people maybe went a little extra, if it's within their means financially, or something that they don't mind doing style-wise. And just, just make it a little brighter and sort of like Halloween, something that, particularly for kids, but this is a tough time for older people too. You know, they could, maybe somebody could take a, you know, grandfather for a ride to see the lights and, and that type of stuff. And then on, and on top of that, I mean, I'm just looking for anybody to tell me it's a crazy idea, kind of stupid to suggest that. But at the same time, just remember that a lot of people, particularly with the virus, but even at this time of year, I think every year I've mentioned, to make a phone call to a neighbor who's alone, send a card, take over some Christmas cookies and, you know, drop them on the porch type of thing, just brighten up somebody's day, doesn't take a whole lot to do that. We all know somebody who isn't getting out, doesn't have kids right around the area, maybe to help them out. Think about it, we have the volunteer center to help families, and hopefully, people will continue to contribute to that, so that's a success again. And I know that there are Thanksgiving boxes of food put together for families, call the volunteer center, call Peace, somebody is putting that stuff together if you want to help somebody. Amazing what a phone call will do to somebody you hadn't talked to in four or five months and just say, "Hey, I wanted to know how you were doing." And you might light up somebody's life for, for a couple weeks just with a quick phone call. So, if anybody, unless anybody has any concerns about lighting up the village, I'll try to get the messenger to, to give us a little publicity, and I did mention it on Shelley Hoffman's thing yesterday that I was going to talk about it, that I was thinking about it. And my wife and I go out every year, we ride around, we go all the developments, out 370 both directions, we go out to, you know, like Seneca Estates and ride through there, Amelia Park, those kind of places. So maybe we don't have to go so far this year, we're just riding around the village and, and we're already planning some extra lighting to add to the festive look, and I hope other people will find that as a nice, easy thing to do to help other people. I guess that's all I have. We'll move on to, oh, I got something here. Mo, the Garden Club donating hanging baskets?
Yes.
That's just...
Yeah, I think you were just going to mention it, to thank them for it, if...
Okay. Over the, over the years, we've, we've gotten some of the pots for the plants that are on the sidewalks in the village, and I think they have a self-watering kind of a thing in them where if it's, we don't get to water them for three or four days, there's a supply in the bottom, there's, I don't know exactly how it works, and they, trying to use them for the hanging ones too, and I guess the Garden Club has donated 12 of them to the cause, which I think is nice. I don't know if that's to replace 12 that aren't self-watering, or if this will be in addition to what we have, but the Garden Club has been wonderful to the village. The decorations for the fall, for Halloween and stuff up at Point Park, they take care of that area so nice. Hats off to the Garden Club, and I will accept them on behalf of the village and thank them for always thinking about making our village look a little bit nicer. All right, thanks, Mo.
Yeah.
We'll move on to department heads, we'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll stick with the agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Code Officer Greg.
Unmute there. Just wanted to mention that we're still receiving permit applications for different projects within the village. Just issued a permit for an in-ground pool this week. We're still getting shed permits, fences, things like that additions, so it's been a very busy year for construction, and it looks like it's continuing, which is nice. It's nice to see, you know, homes and properties being fixed up throughout the village, so. Other than that, I'll stay with the agenda for now.
Okay, thanks Greg.
Yep.
Next up, Village Clerk, Mo.
Going to stick to the agenda. I've got quite a few things on there.
Yeah, it's your agenda, so.
Excellent.
Move on to Treasurer, Anna.
Everyone should have received their September financials, all department heads. Thank you, Mo, for passing them out for me. If anyone has any questions, please look them over really good. I did find that I had missed income from, on the pilots, so I'm taking care of that. If anybody notices anything else, please let me know, I have been kind of racing through these. I will have October's hopefully done by Monday or Tuesday the latest, so you should have the most recent figures that we have while you're doing your budget.
Very good, thank you, Anna.
Okay.
Move on to the Senior Center, Ruth.
Just to reiterate what the mayor said, we are with caution and care bringing some programming inside, practicing all the proper protocols, but with that being said, today was gorgeous and false prevention was outside, so whenever there's opportunity to do anything outside, we're going to do that. So far, it's going pretty well, but we are going cautiously and slowly and very measured with indoor programming. Do want to mention that the Rescue Mission meals are taking reservations, the deadline for Thanksgiving is actually tomorrow, but the deadline for the Christmas dinner is December 4th, so if people want a home-delivered meal, please call, and Nancy Sullivan, our neighborhood advisor, will make sure that you get on the list for the home-delivered meal for that. And the other thing I want to mention is a puzzle exchange day on Monday, the 9th, from 1:00 to 3:00, you do have to call ahead unless know you're coming, and also a yarn giveaway day on Monday, the 16th. So that's what's going on, so give us a call and come and join us when you can, and also Zoom, I'm sorry, I wanted to mention that as well, we are trying to incorporate some Zoom programming. So the mayor's doing the Down Memory Lane program, and we have a nutrition program coming from a Cornell student on proteins and the importance in the senior diet, so give us a call if you'd like the invitation to either of those Zoom things. And I think that's it, thank you.
And I, and I think Joni's trying to do a movie review type of thing, you know, tell you what movie and when it's on, Turner Classic, and then get together, which sounded kind of fun, and then the next one is, oh, I forgot, it's the...
For Veterans Day.
Yeah, it's a World War II movie, the one with Jim Brown.
Dirty Dozen.
Hmm?
The Dirty Dozen.
Dirty Dozen, you're right.
Thank you.
Okay. So, very good, thanks Ruth. Public Works, Chuck.
Just a couple of quick things, the Water Department is done with the hydrant flushing, that was quite a project that took a little over a month, and we had a bunch of little breaks to take care of some of, some of the hydrants, we had to do some maintenance on, we replaced one at Route 48 tonight, or today, so that's been taken care of. Like Greg said, there's been a lot of construction in the village, every time someone digs, we have to go out and mark water lines, or some days it's a half day with one guy just to mark lines, I mean, it's just, it's been busy. The highway, the tree trimming is almost all done, the trees that had to come down are mostly done, Mercer Park was one of the bigger ones, that's, that's been taken care of. We're right into the thick of the brush pickup, people call, want to know, you know, why we're not there the day we're supposed to be there. Normally in the summer, or most of the year, we can get through the village in, in three days. Now it's just, it's a week's time and we haven't been through once, or just that much. I mean, people are raking behind us. If you can, kind of give the guys a break, it's very stressful being in the equipment, in the street, you know, lots of times they're on the wrong side of the road, they're going back and forth, and people get upset, don't like the wait for us. For the most part, people are good, but we have our, some of our issues with people that are in a hurry, the guys are doing the best they can, as soon as we can get through, we will, and we're out every day, every day doing that. And the parks have been put away, a lot of the park equipment, the boaters, the electrics all been shut down, the docks are in, the kayaks are in, everything's in for the winter. So other than that, Mr. Questions, we'll go back to the agenda.
Chuck, thought you might want to mention that we're moving forward on the sidewalk project, and that all the hydrant stuff, according to the agreement, includes a $60 per hydrant rebate from the Lysander Water Districts, so that Anna can be watching for the Lysander check.
Yes, we did, we did get a bunch of the addresses together that they wanted us to finish up, it was a little bit, I talked to the contractor, and he said he's going to try to get to us this year, weather permitting, if not, he'll be back in the spring and he'll hold the, this year's pricing, which is great. The, we do service Lysanders hydrants also, and turn some valves for them, and there is, there is a cost of that, and we'll be putting that together and getting that out for them too. I believe they have to pay us for last year and this year, or they're, they're working on last year's too.
They've paid us for last year's. They've paid us for last year's.
Okay, good. Okay, good, I know there was a questionnaire a few months ago about that, but that's good, and we'll be getting this year together and then we'll be good with it.
Very good, thanks Chuck.
Just back on the, on the leaf pickup, I had, I let Chuck know, but twice in one day last week, they were called out on Facebook for what a great job they were doing with their, with their operations. One of them said it looked like it was army maneuvers going on and the efficiency in which they got through the street. So just want to acknowledge that the people in the village are recognizing the hard work that they do, and they're very appreciative.
Those are nice comments, and I passed them on that, that next morning, and the guys did appreciate that, because it's, it's very stressful just being in the machines and constantly turning, looking, backing, and, but they appreciated it, it was nice.
Yeah, and it, and it really looks nice when everything gets picked up, and, and I continue to mention to people to not put their brush in the street, some people pay attention, some others are a little harder to get through to. And again, for people who don't understand that, it isn't so bad on wide streets, but you get a street, for instance, in Candlewick where, where I live, you put brush out into the street, and if there's somebody parks a car on the other side, there's only one lane, and kids walking home from school, got to walk in that lane along with cars going both ways, some streets, school buses, just really would make, much nicer if people could find ways not to put it in the street. So I continue to, probably as long as I can sit here and talk, I'll mention keeping a brush out of the street, but. We're up to Chief, Michael.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Board Members. I would just remind the public that beginning on November 15th, the overnight parking ban in the village will take effect, and you can't park on the village streets from 1:30 in the morning until 6:00 in the morning during those time periods. I had a conversation earlier this week, and it was on Facebook page with Shelley Hoffman, and I said, reiterate it there, it's not a task that our officers enjoy or look forward to doing, is writing parking tickets for individuals that are parked on the street, but it really is a public safety issue, because our purpose in issuing those tickets is so that Chuck and the GPW crew can keep the village streets plowed. And just think about that, as I mentioned, that, you know, the village was obviously first settled back in the mid-1800s or so, some of the village streets really haven't been widened in that time period, we've got some narrow streets, and if someone is parked on them and a plowed tricycle passed, that street's not going to be cleared, and then it becomes very problematic if there's a fire truck or ambulance that needs to provide emergency services to a resident on that particular location or street, they're going to have a very difficult time getting through. So our goal is to just keep the streets plowed, to let all the guys up at the GPW be able to perform that task effectively. You know, they're up very early in the morning plowing, so everyone can get out and get to work, and those are tough road conditions for them to be operating that machinery in, and our goal is to just try and make that as easy as possible. So we're going to issue some parking tickets for, warning tickets, I should say, for, for a little bit here, but then we're going to have to issue parking tickets. So I could just ask the, the village's population's cooperation in that, greatly appreciated. Other than that, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Very good, Michael, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I, and we do, we do appreciate that, that makes our job a lot easier, and then they do work with us at night, get the cars out of our way.
Now, are we, do we get, I know we have somebody, a different night person, because we are normal midnight guys, not working days, but do people on, out on the road know to call Chuck or somebody if suddenly it gets icy out, that they can, you know, like if 11 o'clock at night, suddenly it's, there's like an ice storm and, and Chuck might be asleep and not realize it's going on, do we, do we call in those situations?
Yes, we've got a supervisor works 7:00 at night to 3:00 in the morning during their rotation, and obviously we've got two other officers assigned to the midnight shift, and that's communicated to them, and they have Chuck's number, and if need be, they will get ahold of him and, and things. Traditionally, you know, if it's something 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, that's something that's probably going to wait if the gangs, you know, and Chuck communicates with us, and we'll say, "We're coming in at 3 o'clock in the morning here." So our people are going to know that Chuck's crew is going to be showing up at 3, so we're not going to call them at midnight, because they're coming in at 3, they're not going to come in at 1, because there's probably not a lot of traffic out there at that time, and they're already coming in at 3. So, but if it's 7 o'clock at night and things take a turn for the worse, Chuck doesn't realize that, then yeah, we're going to pick up the phone and notify them. Because there's probably not a lot of traffic out there at that time and they're already coming in at 3. So, but if it's 7 o'clock at night and things take a turn for the worse, Chuck doesn't realize that, then yeah, we're going to pick up the phone and notify them. We were very, very well today.
Great. Very good. I, I assume that, but I. You know, sometimes you shouldn't assume, get in trouble when you assume.
Sure.
All right, we'll move on to pending business. We have no pending business. Move on to new business. Can I get a motion to turn over the list of the 2020 unpaid water sewer bills for the Maple Grove Water District? In the amount of $2,562.62 to Anadog County for collection? Andy and Mark, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item B, can get a motion to turn over the list of the 2020 unpaid water sewer bills for the Town of Lysander districts. In the amount of $7,113.35 to the Town of Lysander for collection?
Moved.
Mark? Second, Andy, any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item C, can get a motion to turn over the list of unpaid village taxes for the tax year 2020. Dash 2021 in the amount of $63,490.24. Of which $26,886.54 is in Van Buren Properties. And $36,603.70 is Town of Lysander Properties. And they'd be turned over to, to Anadog County for collection. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Megan and Mike, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item D, can I get a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the 2021 renewals of the current Exelis Medical and Dental Plans? With an effective date of January 1st, 2021? Mark?
Second.
Ruth Seaco, second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. There's a tough one. Item E, motion to accept the resignation of Rosemary Johnson, deputy clerk in the clerk's office with regret. Effective Friday, December 4th, 2020. Ruth?
Second.
Megan, second. Did, did most of you get to see the letter that she wrote? She called the people that she worked with in the village, her second family. She's worked with us part-time now for 10 years. And. She's just ready not to drive winters anymore and that kind of stuff. But she did make a great last line. I like that. She said that she would be available for questions. Because Lord knows, most of you who have been around any amount of time, I know Mike and Chuck and, and Andy, I'm sure. Over the years, things came up and it would be, let's ask Rosemary, because she'll know. Because she's been here a while. I, I like to kid her that she was the first village clerk in Anadog County. 75 years she's been on the job. Hey, guys, have a little fun. Rosemary is, has been a special person and I'm so glad that she's been around while I've been mayor on a part-time basis. For the, for the institutional knowledge that she carries with her. And personally, I wish her nothing but the best. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Following that up, item F, can get a motion to appoint Mary Augustus as an informational aide at a salary of $30,758. With an effective date of November 23, 2020. She will split her time between the codes department and the clerk's office. Mark? Megan? And basically the total she's making is what she and Rosemary made before. I mean, so. And, and I think. Many of you probably might not know that Rosemary did a lot of work with water department stuff. I mean, I think she posted everybody's payment and that type of, she received all the bills. Recorded the fact that they were paid, stamped them, you know, sent receipts if they needed one. And so we were hoping we could find somebody who could step in there and do that job and Mary's very familiar. And Mary's, I think will be a great asset to the clerk's office. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Bless you. Opposed? Carried. Item G, can I get a motion to declare the found in Canton Woods furnishings as surplus? An upholstered rocking chair, assorted shelves and racks, a microwave oven, a TV and other miscellaneous items? I see Ruth and Mark. We have motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item H, a motion authorizing. The Canton Woods Senior Center for the Village accepted donation of a slightly used 32-inch flat-screen TV. Andy? Andy, second. Ruth with the motion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Now I got to go on the other sheet and make sure I get Bruce's motions right. Can I get a motion to approve the expenditure of $18,000 for a. Replacement for the structure. At the Baldwin Hill Pump Station?
Moved.
As a Baldwin Hill resident, I'll second it.
Hey man, you might have to abstain. This is, this is a bit of an emergency-type replacement situation. And we're hoping we can get something done before the, the winter weather sets in. So it was kind of important we get this done tonight. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. That was item I. Item J is, can I get a motion to hire Alex Rose? As a full-time laborer with the Public Works Department, specifically water sewer. Effective November 16th at the new hire rate spelled out by current contract.
Moved.
Andy, Mark? I don't know. Bruce, Bruce and Mark, I guess. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Just so people know, Alex has worked with the village for, I don't know, at least three years. Maybe four during summers mowing and, and other type stuff. And. He's interested in becoming a full-time worker. He's already put in some time with us and it's kind of a way of a, a little bit of loyalty. So I think it's a nice, a nice hire.
And this is filling a vacancy.
Right.
Okay, we're not expanding the force.
Right. And item K. Can I get a motion to start the process for renovating. Dome Wells 1 and 2. With an expected expenditure of $55,000 with, and we will, by next meeting have come up with where that. Will come from, from, but there is, there is money in the water, funds, it's just we got to decide which one that falls under.
Okay, I'll make that motion part of this is so that we can authorize the vendors. It's, there's not many. We've got to get this process underway because they have to get it on their calendar.
Very good. So we got a, a motion from Bruce. Do we get a second? Mark? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. There you go, Bruce. You got all three of them through. Before we. Before we go into executive session, anything, any other business that we need to address village-wide? I, I do know that Chuck said that the DPW is preparing the Christmas decorations and we will have a tree. Will not be a formal tree lighting, but I'm hoping that this light up the village will be a. Tree will be like a kickoff to get everybody started, lighten up the village and. See where we go from there. Maybe pack B, always looking for live stuff to do. Maybe they would go around and, and videotape the village. Some of the houses that look particularly nice so that people who can't get out can watch them on television. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn into executive session for contract update? Mark? Andy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? What we will do is shut down the live part and the recording and just stay on those that have to be here. Otherwise, we'll see you all on the 19th.